They have left it, they have six months. Certification, then they could ask-
They do, I thought it was thirty days.
Six months, and then they could ask for another six extension.
Now we looked into it. I thought it was thirty days.
Six months.
We'll watch it?
Yeah.
Oh my god. I would've never thought of that.
Are we ready Carol?
I never would've thought of that.
Ready?
Okay, I'll call this Township Council Agenda Meeting of December 6, 2011 to order. Would you all join me in the flags, Luke?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mr. Carriffy.
Here.
Mr. Sessaro. Mr. Ferrera.
Here.
Mr. Stanton.
Here.
Mr. DiPiero.
Here.
Others present: Mayor Barbario, Jasmine Lim, our Business Administrator, John Englishino, our Township Attorney, Carol Keough, our Acting Deputy Clerk. The purpose of this meeting is to set the agenda for the regular Township Council Meeting of December 13, 2011. Formal action may or may not be taken. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing a notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on December 15, 2010, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in both the Daily Record and the Star Ledger and was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers and local radio stations on December 16, 2010. Note: Council meetings are videotaped and aired on Cablevision, public access Channel 21, at 2:00 p.m. on Sundays, and are also available for viewing at www.parsippany.net. Okay, we have two presentations. The first one is 2012 Property and Casualty Insurance. Jasmine, do you want to get that started?
Yes, with us tonight we have Larry Graham and Zachary Adelman from Fairview Insurance.
Good evening.
Evening, Council.
Jasmine, Mr. Miller come?
Yes.
Okay. Yes. Basically, we were appointed risk managers during August 1st this year. Oh, okay, sorry, you get a little higher? We were appointed risk management, risk managers for the Township on August 1st. And working with the Township Administrator, can you hear me? You okay? Alright, great. And we were entrusted in getting information together and putting it out, the proposal out for your new, for the insurance renewal of 2012, January 2012. With this in mind, we put together specifications from the present insurance carrier, Morris County JF, as well as, we received the loss forms for the last five years from all the other insurance carriers previous to that. We put out the, we formulated the RFP, got the approval of the State Monitor at that point, who reviewed it and approved the RFP that went out, with certain criteria that had to meet for the finalization of how we rate people for the RFP and acceptance of it. With that thought in mind, putting it out and talking, negotiating, and having the quotes come back, we're happy to say that there's significant savings for the Township this year. Basically, all four people, including Morris County JF, came back with a much lower price than last year. And, and that's in front of everyone here. What we have recommended is to go with the Garden State JF, which not only had the best price, but also had lower deductibles that you had last year in certain areas. So there's also not only a savings of almost $400,000 here, not just from the JF, but also from managed care, where that negotiation was, the negotiation was on managed care for the workers' compensation medical portions of the claims. That accounted for $100,000, $300,000 from the JF, which is almost $400,000, over $400,000 in savings for the Township. There can be much more savings, because we're going to work on controlling the losses, and also it's a very conservative estimate. So the fixed savings are $300,000, the variable savings are $94,000. So we have $400,000 worth of savings, and that's a conservative approach. The criteria that we put forth in the RFP, all four carriers met the criteria, we put it through the formula, so it's, everything's verifiable, and I'm certain the State will have no problem with this. It'll totally be approved, because everything was on a fair and open process. Thank you.
Can you just give us a little bit of information on the Garden State JF? How big it is and some of the towns-
Yes, I think I should bring Earl Miller, who's the Administrator of the Garden State JF, and get Earl to talk about that himself.
Thanks, Larry. Evening, everyone. Thanks for having me.
Just give us the-
Name is Earl Miller, you need my business card?
If you get it to the clerk, that would be great.
Jasmine, while he's doing that, just for clarification. Are these bids for one year or three years?
The JFs are for three years.
They're all, all of them, so we're comparing-
Was Travelers for three years? Was their proposal, a three-year proposal?
The JFs are three-year programs.
She asked if Travelers was three years.
Travelers is one year.
Okay.
Travelers is one year.
And that's the reason we rejected them the last time.
I'm official now. The name is Earl Miller, I'm with the Garden State Municipal Joint Insurance Fund. Garden State Municipal Joint Insurance Fund currently has 28 members. We comprise over 780,000 residents in New Jersey. By population, we're the largest joint insurance fund in the state. We've been in existence since 2002, starting with five members then, and have grown to the current level of 28. Parsippany Troy Hills would make 29. We're pushing for 30. And what else would you like to know about us?
If you can just give us some of the towns that are in the Garden State-
Oh, Livingston, Morris, Morristown, Raway, Maplewood, Berkeley, Hamilton, North Brunswick. I could, I don't, I don't remember all 28.
No, that's okay.
West Orange, sister towns in your area, Hamilton. We specialize actually in large municipalities. Most joint insurance funds, when they were originally founded, were founded to serve the needs of smaller towns. Our average population is almost 40,000. So, you know, a town like Parsippany is a perfect fit for our joint insurance fund. We know that larger towns have specific needs in the loss control area, and have larger police forces, and have paid fire departments, and so on. So we've focused on the larger towns and serving their particular insurance needs.
Could you also talk about your training programs? And one of the things that Larry had mentioned to us when we met with Larry was, you also do, I think, twice a year, meeting with the police chiefs to talk about-
We have, we formed the first Police Chiefs Roundtable among joint insurance funds in the state. We also have a Fire Chiefs Roundtable and a DPW Roundtable. The reason for that primarily is that those three groups comprise about 82% of all losses in the joint insurance fund. So the focus there is to bring those representatives from each town together, discuss the risks involved in their particular areas, in police work, in fire, fire safety, and firefighting, and of course in DPW as well. So the training programs focus on those areas. Those groups meet at least twice a year, and we've had excellent attendance. We generally average anywhere from 20 to 25 on average out of our 28 members at those meetings. We have several seminars each year focused on specific needs of the fire departments and the police departments.
What about your training programs?
We do all the standard training programs for, we do harassment, or anti-harassment, I should say. Lockout, tagout, right-to-know. All of this, by the way, is of course included in the assessment that we charge. Police safety training, coaching the emergency vehicle operator, emergency apparatus training, you know, every, all POs require training, we provide.
I have a question. Mr. Miller, right?
Yes.
Mr. Miller, is there anything we, as a township, can do additionally, in addition to the classes you just indicated? Or the training that you just indicated that will help us lower premiums?
Right, here's what we'll do. Presuming you agree to join the joint insurance fund, we will send our risk control team out in January to meet with you to review all of your current programs, all of your current operations. In fact, we did a pre-inspection, I believe, of the town initially, and you actually scored pretty well. We think we can get that score even higher. And what we do is we focus the training on your particular needs. So I don't know how many safety meetings you have, if you're having regular safety meetings, but that's a must. You should have at least a monthly safety meeting in which you review all of your claims, go over any safety issues that are present in the town that need addressing. The JF itself has a monthly safety meeting that we encourage all members to attend, in which ideas are exchanged among the membership. As you can probably imagine, there isn't much that, you know, among 28 towns that hasn't been seen before. So we would come in, make recommendations, and of course work with you to provide the necessary training and provide the support to make that happen. Your biggest area of concern is workers' compensation. That's where the dollars go. Probably 70% of all lost dollars come out of the workers' compensation line. So that's what we focus on, worker's safety, preventing losses. Our claims administrator is very keen on that. Of course, I understand you'll be bringing in Dietz and Hammer, but they have an excellent reputation, so we look forward to working with them as well to help control your workers' comp claims.
Mr. Miller, and I apologize if I didn't make my question clear. And that's great, once you come in, we earn the proverbial gold star. What do we get?
Well, what you get is lower losses.
Okay.
Remember, you have a self-insured retention, I believe, of $400,000. So all of those are coming directly, all those dollars are coming out of your pocket.
But is there any way we, as a town, can help towards that premium? For example, engage, become more engaged? Because I, for one, will volunteer for whatever to help reduce my premium.
You put your finger on a very important point, Mrs. Sessaro, is it?
Yes.
Right. Member participation is critical. That's why we encourage the participation in the meetings. We encourage active participation in safety training. So that, yes, the important thing is that the town take this seriously, engage in the process, and then work with our people to work, you know, to bring those losses down.
Understood. A well-advised and prepared township is going to be a safe one.
Right.
But do we get anything monetarily? For example, if I go to a particular class, or this whole council goes to a particular class, employees go to particular classes, do you knock off $250 a head towards our premium? $100 a head, $300 a head, something like that?
Those sorts of, we don't do that specifically right now. We don't provide dollar stipends for that sort of training, or that sort of participation. But what that does is that comes out in your ultimate loss experience. So we've had members who, through active participation in those programs, actually experienced premium assessment reductions in the current year, because each individual member of this JF is loss-rated on its own loss experience. So that, to the extent that you bring those losses down, that would be reflected in your ultimate loss, in what you actually pay in the following year.
You, we talked about your history before. I looked it up. Pretty impressive. What is your policyholder retention rate?
We've lost two towns since we formed the JF.
In 2002?
Right, since 2002.
February 2002.
February 2002. You did your homework.
Absolutely.
Right. Yeah, we lost Jackson Township, the P-word. And then we- Politics. And then we recently lost South Brunswick, which was actually one of our founding members. That was, that one hurt. But again, we were underpriced by another joint insurance fund, and we refused to reduce our price to that level.
But the rest have stuck?
They have.
Any other questions?
One, Larry, I can't remember if you pointed this out. One of the big advantages of the Garden State JF, and if you go to page 2, is the law enforcement legal deductible. The Garden State JF has no deductible, and the other insurance lines are anywhere from, what, $25,000 to $100,000 as a deductible. So, you know, just one claim can really make even an additional $100,000 difference.
One other thing I got too, I analyzed, we had different ratings on what type of retention you should have with workers' compensation. And when I analyzed the claims going back for the last 10 years, we only had one claim that exceeded the $400,000 level. And that was $475,000. All the other claims were under $250,000. Looking at that, the prices that would be charged for your insurance to lower your retention level to $250, did not make much sense on what you would have saved over the last four-year period. It would have been $400,000 to go from, to go down to $100,000 level. It would have been almost $160,000 to go to a, to go to $250,000 level. So over three-year period, that's $450,000. You only exceed the, you'd be picking up, you would have only saved $175,000 and paid out $450,000 for it. So it didn't make any sense to do that. So we kept the self-insured retention for the comp at $400,000. And what we have to do is keep hammering down the claims and controlling the frequency of claims. And I think doing that by specifically zeroing in on the departments themselves, and separating out the departments, and helping to train within the departments themselves, and specialize the training for that, and the loss control for those, as opposed to a general, the whole township coming to a driver meeting. It's everyone, specifically on where the problems are in the area, the analyzing. We have to specialize in that scope to go after the specific losses in the specific departments that are caught, that are having the problems. And I think if we can control that aspect of it, your claims are going to be reduced significantly as well too. Because if we reduce the frequency of those claims, you're going to see the severity come down as well too. And at that point, we'll be able to lower retention without a large increase in premium. Okay, things of that nature, as the years go by, as the three years go by. So that's what we're looking for on that basis.
Mr. Miller, on a non-technical note, if you don't mind. We, you know, I asked before about client retention rate, policyholder retention, whatever you want to call it. How about on the other hand? We talked about two towns that obviously didn't want to go with you. How about in terms of PR? You know, where's your strength? I mean, where do you lead with others? You know, are you credited? Have you gotten any sort of recognition for excellence in any type of field that you guys cover under?
I don't think there's any, like, Academy Awards for JFs.
Oh, wow.
But the short answer is no. We, I think our success speaks for itself. The fact that this number of towns have chosen to leave other joint insurance funds to join the Garden State Municipal JF is a testimony to the quality of our operations. As, in terms of what we focus on, you're going to hear the mantra, "Risk control, risk control, risk control." Because at the end of the day, that's really what saves you money. Claims administration, risk control, cost control. We utilize the services of John Ganey from Capeport, Saskatchewan, who's the leading workers' comp attorney in the state. He literally wrote the book on workers' comp. He provides advice and guidance on virtually every sizable claim, regardless of which town is involved. So, and John has literally saved us hundreds of thousands of dollars over the years since his involvement with the JF. So the answer there is that, you know, we feel that we have a superior risk control program, and that translates into savings. And that's why we're able to offer lower prices.
I did look up there, I think, as well, as we studied it, and you have had-
I'm sorry, can you speak in the mic?
You have had a growth of towns each and every year of the last five years.
375% over 10 years.
I think that speaks significantly as well too.
You know, we talked about classes before. They're all offered by you. We don't have to kick in for specialized classes.
There's no additional charge to the town, and we come to the township.
Okay.
We come here and provide the training on-site.
I guess question for the group. Coverage basically equal to what we currently have?
Equal to, better than? There's, nothing's ever going to be totally exact for every single item. It's pretty impossible to do when you have four bidders who are all over the place. But the coverage is equal to or better than in 99% of the cases.
So-
They're attached in there as well too.
So is it equal to?
There's analysis in there, yes.
Okay. And the deductibles, I know you said before they're better than in some areas.
Must it, must it-
How does it do overall?
All the deductibles are significantly, way lower than last year. The property deductibles and all the physical damage went from $5,000 to $1,000. And that was with all the bidders, except for, Morris County came up $1,250 per occurrence. The law enforcement legal went from $50,000, Morris County's renewal, what was at $100,000 retention, the renewal was quoted at $50,000 retention, and this is at a $0 for the law enforcement.
So bottom line, it's a significant difference?
Significant difference. So the property deductibles are down, and those savings aren't even taken into consideration, because, you know, because they're two variables to calculate on that basis.
I'm looking at the premium comparison-
Yes.
-from Fairview, and I'm looking under the, well, the first page.
Yes.
The Garden State JF, where you've got the savings from the expiring fixed assessment.
Correct.
Okay? That $318,000, that's pure, straight up-
That's fixed.
That's $318,000 less than what we're paying in 2012, than what we're paying in 2011.
2011, correct.
Period, okay. And what I think I'd like to ask is, I see the 90, and I think, not just for my benefit, but the benefit of my colleagues and of course the public, I see it straight across the board. Under the savings, you add $94,154, and it's estimated additional savings from changing to managed care contract? I'm probably just missing something, because I know this is a liability policy, not a health policy.
No, no, under the workers' compensation, you have the $400,000 retention. That's for both the medical side and the indemnity side. The indemnity side is lost wages, the medical side is to pay for the hospitalization, the injuries, and so forth. Now, we had a breakout from your third-party administrator, and they break out the indemnity claims and the medical claims. And under there, there was an agreement last year where there's a medical network. For instance, it's very similar to your health insurance. For instance, if you go to a hospital and get a MRI, the hospital may have $2,000, but if you belong to a network, they may only charge that network $300 or $400. So you'll see your hospital come in and it'll say $2,000 charge from the provider, and here's the bill, and Bodoni, the hospitalization carrier, only paid $400 for that. That's the savings between that $1,600. Now, what we did is, your contract last year had a clause in there which took the managed care organization that you were using, which is a very good managed care organization. They have very, very good contracts with the hospitals and doctors, very heavily discounted. And you had, there's two items that you get based that off, the difference. And what would happen is, is that you would have a physician billed $500, and they had a contract with that physician for $100. You had a $400 savings there. Well, the network, it costs money to develop those networks and so forth, and that's what their business is. They were getting 35% of that difference to come back to them for, you know, developing doctors, doing the contract, promising the physicians and the hospitals, you know, the business. What we did, and then there's also what you have called usual customary charges. Now, usual customary charges are what the 75th percentile is what, it's medical insurance. It's exactly what physicians and hospitals charge as a usual customary basis, okay, in this area. So you have two charges. You could have a doctor who says, "I'm going to bill $500." The usual customary charge may be $400 that every doctor in the area. This doctor thinks he's better than everyone else. He bids 5, he bills 500, and you have a usual customary of 400. Now, what I did was, we negotiated that whichever was lowered, and there are some instances where the doctor bill is lower than the usual customary too. You have a doctor that gives you the discount from. So what we did was, we said whichever was lower, the difference, either UCF, if that was a lower difference from the medical, from the medical discount, or the doctor's original bill, or hospital's original bill, we would just take the lowest portion difference and do 25% of that instead of 35%. And when we ran that through just the first nine months of last year of your medical bills and workers' compensation, the savings was $94,154, just over nine months. So I wanted to do it on a conservative basis, because my philosophy is that if we could do the same thing next year, why I did it over nine months is, is that I want to reduce our frequency down. I want to get it down 25% if we can. Okay? If it's going to be worse, if we don't get the frequency down, the savings will be greater than $94,000, but you're also paying out those claims. So I want to get the claims down. So I was very conservative of the $94,000 savings there. That's really only the savings over last year, over a nine-month period, of the medical portion of the claims for workers' compensation that was paid out.
So really, then, I'll bring back my original question. When you add that with the fixed assessment, we're paying $412,000 less for the 2012 premium than we did in 2011?
Correct. And that's a conservative, very, very conservative approach there. And that's not taking into consideration the lower property damage deductibles, the lower property deductibles, the lower auto physical damage deductibles for comp and collision.
How about 2013, 2014? Are we capped with increases, premium increases?
Your rating on your basis, it's going to be, it's going to be an experience rate basis. They experience rate each town as it is.
Okay. How are we forecasting?
Larry, I could speak to that.
Good.
Our average increase over the 10 years, year over year, has been about 3%, 3.5%.
That's been with your, all your clients?
Among all, among all members. Now, some members have been above that, some have been below that. But, you know, that's been our average.
On the savings on the fixed assessment, I mean, I was never the greatest at math, but I kind of looked at it. It looked like between a 20% to 23% less than the others of what we would be paying in premium next year versus this year. Let me ask you something. What are you doing better? Or are you not giving us, and I'm sure you're not doing intentionally, but are we not getting more for what we're paying for? Or are you just doing something better than the rest?
Well, let me clarify one thing. I think it's, compared to the other JFs' current quotes, it's not quite that much of a difference. Compared to your expiring number, yes, it's significant. But I believe the other funds quoted numbers that were a little lower even than your expiring. So I think it's more like, more like 15% perhaps?
Okay.
Compared to the nearest-
15% is a lot of money. It's a nice percentage, double digits, but what are you doing there?
As I said earlier, you know, we, because of our emphasis, because we put so much emphasis on the risk control and cost savings, from the smallest member to the largest member, our overall average loss experience has been lower, to the extent that we're able to offer better pricing.
Okay. And since we're on premiums, next, January 1, 2012 comes around. You looking for a lump sum payment, or are we on a payment plan?
All JFs pay a 50/50. The first installment is due in February, the second is due in June.
Okay. And hypothetical, catastrophic incident, okay? Do we have, do we have any kind of, in this policy that we're looking at? Do you provide for stop-loss, or does stop-loss kick in? You know, like the umbrella policy?
Well, we have a $15 million limit on liability, including employment practices, I might add. And that's very rare among any joint, all the joint insurance funds. I think the mill only goes up to $11 million on employment practice. We have, and we have, the JF itself has something called an aggregate stop-loss.
Okay.
Which actually protects the overall loss fund for all members. So that if that loss fund were to theoretically be exhausted, we have an additional $5 million in protection from our excess carriers above that number.
So it's $20 million total?
No, above our loss fund. Our total loss fund right now is about $12 million.
What's your experience been in terms of payouts? Have there been a lot of big catastrophic payouts?
We've had one, one very large claim, that was an employment practice claim, that was a little over $2 million.
Okay.
But the JIF only retains the first $250,000 of any liability loss, and the first 500 of any workers' compensation loss. So, other than that, above that, it's paid by the excess carrier.
And I didn't, of course, I don't expect you to bring an annual statement or anything like that. What's your reserves look like? I mean, I know you don't have 10 bucks in reserves, but I'm not asking for the exact number, but what are you looking at?
We're carrying about $24 million in loss reserves right now.
Okay.
So, it's, you know, it's a big joint insurance fund.
How's that in the industry standard compared to the industry?
Oh, I think it's comparable. I mean, we have, I mean, I thought we provided the financial statement. If not, I can certainly send it. But we're running surpluses in the more recent years, I will be candid. We had one very bad year in 2004. That's really been a bit of a drag on the fund for the, up until the last several years.
Okay.
But we turned the corner in 2008. That was just, that year was what we call in the business, frequency of severity. We had a number of very large losses that hit the JIF layer. Since that time, we haven't had those issues. So, again, like all joint insurance funds, we're subject to regulation by the State Department of Banking and Insurance and Community Affairs, and we got a clean bill of health on our last audit.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, I just want to note for the public, we actually do have handouts for the public also. I apologize for not handing them out earlier.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you guys.
Great job.
Thank you.
I just want to note for the record, unless I hear otherwise from Mr. Inglisino, we're going to have two resolutions on for the joint insurance fund. One will be to join the Garden State JIF, and the second would be an extraordinary unspecified services resolution to award to the Garden State JIF.
Okay.
All right. We're up to medical and dental insurance?
Yes, we have Ryan Graham from Fairview Insurance and Ada Viszike from Access Point.
Okay. Wait.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hi. Start with the first slide.
For the tape, just give your name so we know who's talking.
Ryan Graham, Fairview Insurance. Okay.
Viszike from Access Point, I'm too short for this. There we go. You have to share.
All right. The first page is a snapshot of how your loss history has been. I can actually date back to your loss history, back when we pulled you guys out of the state health benefits, and you've always run favorably. We had a couple of bad years in 2009 and 2010, but it's improved moving forward. And I actually want to take this opportunity to congratulate you guys on the wellness coaching program because we actually have updated data today, and it's showing that the program is helping your overall healthcare costs. So, that program is, been working very, very well for the township.
Do we have a hard number, Ryan? Mr. Graham, sorry.
What we did, we've actually, we can, we'll present that at a different date, but it's identified a lot of preventative measures. You're doing a lot of body mass index readings, you're doing a lot of hypertension readings, you're doing a lot of blood pressure readings, and it's catching things early. And the key to healthcare always is catching things early, preventing heart attacks and things of that nature. So, we saw the data today, and it's working very, very well for the township, and it's done a lot of great work for you guys to help control your costs. And that's the most important thing.
I emailed you a summary.
Yes, we did receive an email.
Yes, I saw that.
Okay.
I saw that.
Thank you.
I wanted to follow up.
Yeah, so that, I think, is a true testament to how the plan's running. So, jumping to the next slide. This is just an overall review of your renewal history dating back to 2007. And coming out of the state, you had a negative increase, and then moving forward, we've had some trend increase and below-trend increases. And what we expect moving forward, based on how your claims are running, we expect your expected cost to only go up approximately 6% for 2011, for 2012. I'll jump forward. The next slide. The next slide is a review of all the proposals that were submitted. We went out to market, we looked at all the quotes, we still feel IDA proposes the best financial option. As you can see, we have many quotes that are more expensive. I'll address the IAA quote because it looks attractive, but it's not really attractive. The way the contract is structured, there's no reinsurance for any type of claims that are run-out claims that go beyond January 1st of the following year. So, there's no protection for the township, and that contract is not a valid contract for you guys to be a part of. But as you see in the bottom, our overall expected, we believe, will increase from 7.3 to 7.8 from a cost standpoint. Next slide. This is just a comparison of your renewal. Last year, when Ada did the renewal, the proposal came back at approximately 7.3 million is what we expected. You're going to trend to that 7.3 million. That's where it's going to look to end.
It's within $88,000 difference.
Would you use the microphone?
It's within $88,000 difference between what was, what we proposed as expected as to what it is trending all the way for the 12 months.
Moving forward, we expect that your claims will increase to 7.8 million for the year of 2012.
And that's because of medical trend?
Medical trend. But again, you know, it's, it can fluctuate one way or another, but I, I'm going to...
It's based on claims, Jasmine. That's really and truly based on claims because the fixed cost stayed the same. IDA didn't increase the fixed cost.
Our fixed would actually decrease.
Right, but the, didn't you say the medical trend was 8%?
No, that's what they expect your claims will be. Has nothing to do with the medical trend. They put, it's just what they expect your claims to be.
But that's also...
For next year.
But it's also partially factored into what the expected is moving forward. Trend, national trends roughly 12%.
Yeah, it's a lot lower than the trend.
But based upon how your claims are running, and we analyzed how the claims are running very favorably, and all your preventive measures that you're putting in place, now, we anticipate that it will not be much of an increase for next year.
We'll hit the max, you say?
No, 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 no.
The maximum would be a lot higher.
Yeah, we don't, that's not, it's not looking that direction at all.
Okay.
The following slide is an overview in terms of the medical insurance renewal. Your claims have been improving for the last quarter. Your claims have actually been on a decline, starting from the beginning of the year. And we recommend, our recommended next steps are to stay with IDA, continue moving forward with your wellness program. And what we want to do moving forward is add new plans to the township. Add an HSA plan, which is a high-deductible health plan, add other plans that employees have the option to, since the Chapter 78 legislation have gone in place, we want to, and employee deductions will start taking place, having higher costing option plans like a 2-hour co-pay as a voluntary option to employees. You will probably see employees migrate into these lesser costing plans. And that will overall increase, help your claims as well as the premium that's going to be moving forward. And all of our townships that we represent have been looking to add multiple plan options for employees. And that's purely, again, on a voluntary basis. And what we would do quarterly is educate employees of these new plan options, and we would attach what their cost is for what they pay in premium to what the cost would be for lower costing plans. And you'll start seeing some folks take some of those options. The following slide is the Delta Dental Renewal. You're on a self-insured program right now. We anticipate your increase to be roughly $67,000 of claims. We quoted multiple carriers on a self-insured basis, and we actually even have a fully insured carrier that we quoted as well, and nothing was comparable that we felt that would justify a switch. Horizon Blue Cross provides a lower costing option, but they do not guarantee benefits anymore to be equal to and better than. And to add to it, I also put in what the network disruption was. And I actually have seen and been involved in multiple cases where a network disruption is high, is a grievable item, and any, and you can wind up paying more in terms of the grievance and so forth, it's not going to justify a financial switch.
And the difference between Horizon and Delta, anyway, current Delta's minuscule.
Uh, well, on the dollar figure, it shows $100,000, but they're not giving you the same level of benefit.
No, no, I'm sorry. 472 and 430.
539. 539.
539 and 430.
Oh, I got you. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It doesn't adhere to your collective bargaining contracts.
I got you. But the problem is, we're not getting equal to.
Correct.
Can I just explain a little bit about the network? Delta Dental, they use the Premier Network. 93% of all dentists participate in it, and they pretty much pay what they, what the dentist charged. The reasonable and customary, remember, the other gentleman was talking about reasonable and customary? They get paid almost 100% of what they charge. So, everybody wants to be in it and is in it. As opposed to Horizon, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, they have negotiated rates. So, the employee, they only pay what the negotiated rates are, so the doctor will charge more above what's reasonable and customary, and they get balanced billed. And with a 59% difference in network, that's huge. And that's why we didn't feel that you would benefit, the town would benefit by recommending Horizon, Blue Cross, Blue Shield.
Well, what you mentioned about contracts, it really doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Is it contractual, better than or equal to?
Right, but I just wanted to explain why there's such a difference because they pay out less to the doctors. That's why.
And then the final slide is just, again, an overview of the dental renewal, and we're going to recommend to stay with Delta Dental. And our admin fees have actually only went up about 2% with Delta Dental, and the rest is based upon their claims, projected claims. And it just quickly overviews what we just stated in the last slide, Horizon not being equal to and better than, and the various network disruption that would take place if you did change. And again, with the network disruption that big, like I said, I have actually seen other clients that changed in the grievance, and they lost the grievance. State Department being one of them.
Okay, any questions from the council?
So?
Mayor, Jasmine, anything?
Great job, Ryan, Ada.
Thank you.
Mr. Graham, I'm sorry, just one more question.
Yes.
Just real quick, on the IDA, on the health insurance part, okay? The expected is 7.8 million.
Correct.
But even with the max, it's, it still seems like it's one of the lowest.
Yes.
Yes, correct.
Compared to the other maxes?
Yes, council.
Okay.
I have to plug a little bit IDA. They are very, very careful on really looking at their claims. There have been a lot of claims that were really workman's comp, and they were coming through the medical insurance. So, they really look at it, make sure that they are legitimate claim, they investigate it. It's been, because this year was our turn to our company to deal with any claims issues, and they're very, very diligent on making sure that they pay what they're supposed to pay and nothing that they're not supposed to pay.
And it's equal to and better, right?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Got to ask.
It's reflective in your claims experience, too.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we'll put those two on for, on the consent agenda next week.
Okay, ordinance for second reading. Everybody have time to renew that? Any questions or comments on them?
None. May.
Okay, here are no one discussion reminders, scheduled meetings, December 13th, 7:30 PM, regular meeting, public invited, public participation. January 1st, 2012, at noon, our inauguration. January 3rd, 2012, at 7:30 PM, our reorganization meeting, our agenda meeting, public invited with public participation. No minutes for approval. Mayor, anything?
Yeah, if I may, I want to make note on one thing here, and it's important that I mention this tonight. In the Portcypina Life, there was an article for November 25th. I just want to set the record straight and clear, where it says Mayor James Barbera explained that he did meet with the Environmental Advisory Committee, and all but two members are on board with the project. Well, that's not true. I, that's a misquote. Maybe I did say it. If I did, it's wrong. I spoke to the members of the Environmental Committee in regards to a letter, and when one of the candidates came up in regards to that, you know, they didn't do a study. And basically, that would be unfair to the Environmental Committee. They didn't have a, they weren't in favor or not in favor of it. They were never, when this first started out, they were never notified or to be involved. So, I want to make that clear. The Environmental Committee in no way has an opine on it, opinion on it, excuse me, and stuff like that. Basically, what I said in that meeting was the fact that, when I spoke to them, the Environmental Committee did say that no member or candidate speaks on their behalf. That's what I said. So, and I think, and I haven't spoken to anybody for an Environmental Committee, but I think that would have a big concern in regards to that because they had no opinion on it. They never had an opportunity to even study it. So, that would be unfair to them. That's number one. Number two, I just want to update you on the flood mitigation in Lower Lake Hiawatha and what we've been doing. And I have to tell you, Justin Leesa, the township engineer, has been doing a great job. The residents that received the substantially damaged letters, he's been meeting one-on-one with. Today, we met with several residents in regards to the flood mitigation, one acquisition, two to elevate, or three to demolish. And we go, you know, through about hour meetings, an hour and a half, but we give them all what details, what things that need to be done. And I think it's going better that way, the one-on-ones. And we give them options that, you know, that FEMA, what FEMA requires and all that. So, I just wanted to, you know, make that clear as well. Also, in regards to a question, I think I was asked of Councilman Brian Stanton last week in regards to the stacking ordinance. I know, Brian, you emailed me in regards to that. I don't have that ordinance, it's still in discussion, number one. Number two, I will, you know, we're still looking forward to make that ordinance even stricter, but there's some issues I do have with the ordinance that we would move forward on, and I want to feel comfortable before I move that ordinance forward to you guys as well. I know we discussed it. And that being said, I want to bring the ordinance in. We have some, you know, some things we have to be concerned about, too. We have Bill S2795, which was passed by the Senate. That's going to be a big concern for the township of Portcypina and Troy Hills. Basically, what that's going to do is going to take the control out of the hands of the township to inspect properties. The only time we'd be able to inspect them is if they change in tenants, in tenancy. And that, I have a big...
We did a resolution on that, didn't we?
I know we did a resolution, but my concern is if that passes, that takes control out of that. We have 7,000 apartments, and I don't think a lot of these senators, senators that voted on this took that into, into consideration. We need to inspect our apartments. We definitely need to inspect them. There's no doubt about it. Health, public safety and welfare, as well as stacking. If this bill is passed by the Assembly, that's going to be a huge disadvantage to the township of Portcypina and Troy Hills.
Maybe we need to reissue our resolution again.
Well, I think what we need to do is lobby our Assembly because that's where it's headed right now. It's going to be heading over there. And so, we need to lobby our Assemblymen as well, all the district Assemblymen as well. And, you know, I have, I have an issue when you have elected officials voting in districts where they have no apartments in favor of something, districts that have apartments like we do. We need to be able to go in there, there's just a host of reasons why we're not going in there, not just for stacking, the safety and welfare of the residents in that area as well as the surrounding areas. And we cannot, we cannot lose that ability to do that. And I think we really, this is something we really need to dig our feet in and fight. I don't care what party, I'll, you know, we have the mayor, I guess it's, can't remember what town it is, but John...
New Brunswick, Mayor Cahill, who's been very active.
I've reached out to him. We need to fight on this one. This would be, put the township in a huge disadvantage. So, that being said...
Whatever we can do to help, let us know.
Well, we're going to be working on, I'm going to be calling up the mayor from New Brunswick, and we're going to see what we need to do for it. We're going to, I'm definitely going to need council support, township support as well because we cannot, that would be such a disadvantage to the township. So, that being said, thank you for giving me the opportunity, Councilman President Piro.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, the administration, bids?
We did not receive any bidders on the Noel Country Club catering.
Yeah, I read that you're going to put out a rebid.
Yes.
At the same bottom level?
We haven't decided at what level yet.
Okay, should I be involved in any discussions that you have?
Sure.
Along those lines?
Yes. Yes. And then the solar panels, I'll discuss later on under resolutions.
Okay. No RFPs. Resolutions, schedule of Township Council meetings, 2012. Unless I don't have the latest one, I have my 2012 calendar now. And when I went through it, August 24th is a Friday.
I won't see you.
It's probably should be the 21st.
It should be August 21st.
Yes. Good catch.
Okay. We'll just quickly go over these. If anybody has any comments, bring them up. Awarding contracts for professional engineering and real estate appraisal services. Engineering environmental services. Are these all beyond? You're going to have recommendations for us on that, Jasmine?
Yes, there's a resolution, and the recommendation is to award on a non-fair and open basis.
Okay.
All of the, Jasmine, the engineering, the second one from the top, the engineering, environmental, certified evaluation, they're all lowest bidder?
These are professional services contracts, so they give us a.
An hourly rate?
We're issuing contracts, yes, based on an hourly rate.
Okay, okay, so are they the lowest hourly rates?
Well, we issue contracts to many engineers.
Okay.
Agreements because we use many different engineering firms in particular, so.
I mean, we've been using them for years?
Yes.
Okay, so.
They're one of several firms that we've used. And just, so that you know, we tend to go out on a fair and basis about every two years. It's a very cumbersome process, so we don't do it every year. And, but we're planning to go out again soon.
Okay, awarding contract for broker of frigate services, different compensation plan.
This is also on a non-fair and open basis, and it's to AEPG.
Okay. 2012 Homeland Security.
Yes, it's a $5,000 grant that would match $5,000 in township funds.
Okay. Submittal of application for NJDOT Safety Fund Grant for Safe Corridors.
This is really, the grant application was already submitted, and, oh, the grant was awarded. So, the resolution is authorizing signing of an agreement with the state.
Okay, how much was the grant for?
About $1,300.
Okay. Okay, and the 30 KW roof-mounted solar panel array?
Yes, we're recommending award to the low bidder. And the low bidder is SolarMite Electrical Contractors from Ford's, New Jersey. We're recommending both the base bid for the 20 kilowatt system and the alternate bid of $32,000 for an additional 10 kilowatts. Just so that you know, the entire project, including the architectural services, is about $170,000. And of that, the township will only pay about $18,000. We're going to take some money out of buildings and grounds. The remaining, remaining funds are from the stimulus, the Department of Energy grant.
Jasmine, question. What jumps out at me in that is tennis facility? Because I haven't been at that part of communities. They do play in there, right?
Oh, yeah, we rent out the tennis facility.
I mean, I want to make sure I do everything by protocol, but don't you think we could push some of that cost through the recreation portion, I'm looking at Pat, of the open space fund?
Well.
Because, I mean, it is, you know what I'm saying?
The tennis facility is.
Doesn't need to be fixed, but.
It's run by a private, I don't think we would be allowed to use that.
Ah, okay, it's not ours.
We lease it to them.
Oh, okay. Well, see, I don't play down there, so. I don't play at all.
And that's, it's just, that's the building that the solar panels are going on.
Just thinking, just thinking. No, appreciate it.
Can't see you jumping the net, John.
Huh?
I can't see you jumping over the net.
No, no.
Mr. DePiero, you do have the one add-on resolution.
Are we doing that now?
Oh, we can go to the add-on resolution. See if I can find it.
For the Affordable Housing Trust Fund?
Allocated money from Municipal Affordable Housing Trust Fund to the Special Needs Housing Partnership. Is that the one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we want to vote on this tonight, or we're just going to add this to our agenda?
If it's the council, if the council's willing to vote on it tonight, I would recommend it. There's a finite pool of state monies available that the state will utilize to match municipal commitment to. To go towards group homes in your municipality so that you get COA credits. Right now, you have almost $5 million in your Affordable Housing Trust Fund. If you put up a million dollars, you would provide that million dollars to the state. The state will match that with another million dollars. And that money will be used to build group homes in Parcity. And in Parcity, the benefits of Parcity is that you will get COA credits, one credit per bedroom. So, it's a program that has been instituted in some part because the statute requires that if you don't use the money within a certain period of time to build affordable housing, that it goes back to the state. And then the state can use that money wherever it wants in the state. What this program does is incentivizes municipalities to provide affordable housing at this time where your affordable housing obligation is obviously in question because of inaction by the state with respect to affordable housing. And not only will you be able to provide some affordable housing, but you will also be able to bring an extra million dollars of state money into Parcity to help satisfy your affordable housing obligations going forward. So, it's something that we certainly highly recommend, something that makes a tremendous amount of sense. But as I say, there's a finite pool of dollars available. And we received some calls from the state saying, you know, get that resolution on the agenda and get it down there. So, that's why we're recommending it to be on for tonight. Certainly, you're seeing it for the first time. If you want to wait until next week, you can certainly do that. But we just didn't want to, you know, take the chance that the time may.
Is everybody willing to move on it tonight?
Yeah, I think so.
We did discuss this a few meetings ago.
Yes, we did. Okay, John, would you offer that, please?
Sure. Resolution allocating monies from Municipal Affordable Housing Trust Fund to the Special Needs Housing Partnership. Whereas the mayor and council of the township of Parcity in Troy Hills, Morris County Township, has approval established in Minister an Affordable Housing Trust Fund, AHTF. That includes development fees, payments from developers in lieu of constructing affordable units on site, barrier-free escrow funds, rental income repayments from Affordable Housing Program loans, recapture funds, proceeds from the sale of affordable units. And whereas the township wishes to participate in the Special Needs Housing Partnership established through Departments of Community Affairs and Human Services and New Jersey Housing Mortgage and Finance Agency, HMFA. And whereas AHTF monies may be collected for affordable support of special needs housing within township. And whereas by allocating $1 million to the Special Needs Housing Partnership from its Affordable Housing Trust Fund, the township will provide the funding for the acquisition and rehabilitation of special needs housing within its borders. And whereas the township also wishes to enter into a memorandum of understanding, MOU, with DHS, which is Department of Human Services, and HMFA, which, understanding, will coordinate the efforts of the parties to create appropriate housing for individuals with developmental disabilities in the community through the purchase and conversion of existing residential properties within the municipality. Now, therefore, be resolved that the mayor and council of the township hereby allocate $1 million from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for use by the Special Needs Housing Partnership, subject to the execution of an MOU. And is further resolved that the mayor and council of the township hereby authorize the mayor of the township to execute the MOU with HMFA and DHS on behalf of the township. Township Council of Township Parcity in Troy Hills. Do I have to do a test? Read a test?
No.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sisera, second by Mr. Stanton. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cariffey?
Yes.
Mr. Sisera?
Real quick, although I had some initial reservations, it's not taxpayer money, so I will grudgingly vote yes.
Mr. Ferrer?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes, I see some puzzled looks. Just so you understand, this is money put aside, collected from developers towards their fair share of allocation of modern income housing. It's a special fund put aside for this purpose.
It's not taxpayer money.
And if we don't do this, then the state's going to confiscate that money. But we will still have the COA obligation, so.
It's like they have us in handcuffs, the state.
It's the old use it or lose it kind of a.
No, this is different from the.
No. Okay, so that's passed.
Good question.
No engineering report. Chief Financial Officer, you want to quickly go through those, Jasmine?
Yes, the first is canceling overpayments for sludge payments. And the total is $1,500 about. The second is. Is canceling credit balances for the water utility. And the total is $257,000. The third is canceling credit balances in the sewer utility. And the total is $322,000.
Oh, dollars. The water was how much? $257,000, you said?
No, $257.
Dollars, okay.
It's various accounts.
Okay.
And then the sludge was $1,531.
Right.
The, just want to make sure. The next is granting a refund of overpayment for senior citizen deduction.
Okay.
Next is canceling tax overpayment, overpayments. And the total for a number of parcels is $41,883. Next is cancellation of 2010 balances of less than $10. And that total is $202.
Okay.
Next is canceling. Canceling funds into the golf utility, I'm sorry, surplus. And it's $85,000 from salaries and $75,000 from operating expenses.
And that goes into the, that stays in the Null utility surplus?
Yes, it will go into, it will lapse into surplus. And that's to help us out in the coming year.
Yep.
The next is. It's canceling an emergency, no, I'm sorry. This is an emergency resolution for the snowstorm. And it's $125,000 in overtime salaries and $15,000 in operating expenses. The next is a transfer resolution from several accounts into other accounts. The funds that are receiving additional funds, mostly related to both storms, both Irene and the snowstorm. And then one of the big items was, is workers' comp. We were underfunded on the workers' comp. And as was mentioned earlier, we are, we have a self-insured retention of $400,000 per case. So, it's, we just had a lot of surgeries this year. It wasn't so much that we had a lot of accidents this year.
Okay, thank you.
The next is. Canceling an appropriation of $250,000 from Hurricane Irene. And that was because the library came in so much less than we had expected. The, we had anticipated that the library remediation and mitigation would cost $500,000. And it actually came in at 250, actually a little over 200. So, we're canceling $250,000 of the emergency. So, that's money that we won't have to raise in next year's budget.
Good. Is that it, Jasmine?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Inglisino? Are these all closed session? These.
Yes, the tax appeals.
Tax appeals?
Yes, those are all closed session.
Okay. Then we're up to a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, come forward, sign in, state your name and address. You have five minutes.
Tom Waika, One Bennett Court. Last week. Last week, we were discussing a project about Community Hope, buying a two-family home with two units. Again, using money from Affordable Housing Trust Fund. At several points in that discussion, beginning, middle, and end, it was noted that the purchase would be designated by Community Hope for veterans' housing. And looking up the organization's website, it's, actually, it's one of their fortes, not just housing, but a lot of assistance to veterans. So, it sounds like a very worthy organization. And if I'm correct, it was also pointed out that the trust fund was accumulated by developers who built and profited from sales in homes in Parcity. So, the request of 170K really wasn't any impact to the town taxpayers. The problem that I had was during that discussion, you know, a member of this council decided to cynically grandstand and discuss the program in terms of, quote-unquote, "social engineering at its finest." And then proceeded to vote against the quote, "out of principle." You know, I'm not asking for any kind of apology or reversal on that vote. I wouldn't ask someone to compromise so-called principles, whatever they decide they are. But I would ask for a little bit more sensitivity when we're discussing some of the more marginalized people in our society. Especially, you know, those people that are not just the ones that bust your tables or take your orders down at your favorite diner or mow the lawn. But some people that are recipients of the benefits of these programs are sometimes those that risk their lives fighting for the security of this country. And it's often the case that they're struggling just as badly as anyone in our society. One of the questions that I want to just throw out there, you can answer after I'm done. I only have five minutes. Pat DeFalco had talked two weeks ago about the shortfall of 300K. And I know that we had just talked about the surplus with regard to the golf facility, the Null. I'm not sure if there's a connection with regard to that. But I would like to ask any of the folks that voted no on the vote last month, what the reasoning is. Just basically, if I'm missing something with regard to where is that money going to come from? Just want to know the rationale behind that. Last week, Roy had noted that Realogy is moving, and we're all shocked about that. The obvious question that came to my mind is something I've raised so many times before. You know, where's the big campaign promise from 2009, the Economic Development Advisory Committee? Last time we talked about it, the mayor noted he was getting to it, but in effect, had become the Economic Development Committee. And I know it's been a busy two years, especially the last few months. But that's what committees are for. It's about delegation, and that's what good management is all about. If you don't have a quorum, there's nothing to stop you from altering the ordinance. Case in point, Mr. Sisera, with the full consent of this council, was successful in altering his transparency ordinance, so it became not much of anything of effect. Instead of populated by energetic people that would be willing to take action from day one. I know, Mr. Barbera, you still have two appointees on that committee that I can vouch are very willing to take action from day one. Ms. Catanzaro, in her video interview on Patch, had talked about a simple outreach to businesses within and outside of Parcity in order to assess their decision-making environment. So, I'm asking again, you know, what's the holdup? One more thing that I wasn't going to talk about. One more thing that I wasn't going to talk about until some of the presentations tonight, um, I am very glad that a sad chapter in this town's history is coming to a close tonight with, uh, the purchase of a new liability insurance policy. I'm glad that someone was in the room, uh, besides the local reporter in December of 2008, when the last decision was made, uh, the report, and, and also had the wherewithal to report it to the state comptroller. I feel that that report spoke for itself, regardless of how many excuses you wanna make for that decision. Uh, in my opinion, it was the most egregious violation in town's recent history since one of our former mayors went to jail for amount one-fiftieth of what was blown in the first year of that purchase of that JIF policy. And as far as I'm concerned, anyone that was a party to that decision, your political career should've been over that night. Thank you.
I'm gonna respond to the Economic Development Committee. You may go first, John.
Well, I already know who my opponent is in the next election, in the, in the November election. Um, I will tell you one thing, I did vote for the, uh, the funding regarding the group home. I care all about society's people, in particular veterans, and not gonna share with you tonight, Tom, because I'm not here to grandstand what I do for people on my free time, okay? But I did support it. And COA is social engineering, okay? 'Cause where are we gonna put all these apartments at one point? Okay? Because we're, for every unit, unit you're supposed to have, I forgot what the equation was, mayor, town attorney can jump in, you're supposed to build five more, okay? You're supposed to build five more. That's like another half of Parsippany in our town, okay? That's what I'm talking about when I say COA. So if you wanna come up here and say, or imply that I don't care about society's less fortunate, Tom, I'm really sorry for, you better come up with some really good issues, not the, not, uh, not name-calling, especially when you're gonna run against me next time, okay?
Okay, Mayor?
Okay, regards to the Economic Development Committee, we just had a report done by the Morris County Economic Development Corporation, uh, which, um, I gave a presentation on, uh, last, was it, one day? December first, actually. And they made some recommendations for environmental committee, and I have to tell you, um, no disrespect, Mr. Waika, huh? Economic development, I keep saying, yeah, environmental, but, um, fact of the matter is, myself, Ann Grassi, who's in the back, freeholder, and John Sisera ran on Economic Development Committee. But within the last two weeks of December, a lame duck mayor put you and, uh, your, your constituent on, I shouldn't say that, Ann Liz Catanzaro, two weeks before I could even appoint anybody. Uh, my whole concept of that Economic Development Committee was to put on qualified individuals who knew about economic development, who were in that field, but instead, I get, um, I get hit on December twenty-second, when I actually saw your resume, I don't have it on me, that you sent in December twenty-something to get into that committee. I felt that the mayor then should've let me do the appointments, not when the last week made those appointments. That's very frustrating when you know you wanna run a committee a certain way, considering the mayor is economic development in its township. Um, I'm going to probably amend that, I'm not gonna get any help from Councilman, uh, John Sisera unless he wants, wants to help me, I'm probably gonna amend that ordinance in such a way where we can work, uh, with the Morris County Economic Development Corporation on their recommendations, which I thought are much better and, and suited for Parsipony. Um, I know you wanted to come up here and take shots at us and stuff like that, but you were a lame duck appointment, bottom line. I would've never appointed you, nor would I have ever appointed Ann Liz Catanzaro. No disrespect to either one of yous, but that's just the fact, that's the facts. And I, I want this committee to be solid, I want experienced people on it that know more than I know about economic development, there's probably a lot more people who do know more. But that being said, um, I will be moving forward on Economic Development Committee, so you know.
Just to make a quick comment on my no vote. Mr. DeFalco came here and he read his thing about, uh, the bad weather they had, why they needed the increase in the golf fees. The day we came and voted, we received a letter that basically stated something against what he said, it was like, due to the caterer being up for a rebid, that we need to increase the fees. So what I wanted to do before I voted on it, I wanted to clarify, and I think the public should've known that too. It wasn't exactly what Mr. DeFalco said, that it was just based on weather, it was also based on a rebid for the caterer, so I wanted to make that clear, and I think the public should've known about that too, should've been made clear before I voted for it. And I'll say here, I have no problem with raising the fees, I just think the public should be aware that there's more than one reason that was given that day. Thank you.
Pat Patacia, one eighty-two Hawkins Avenue. I just asked, in the future, that, um, town council...
Which one?
Everybody.
Okay.
Town council.
Sorry.
Um, please hold back responses in regards to, uh, pers- personal matters. I don't think what you said tonight was very nice.
Excuse me, Pat. When I get attacked, I'm going to attack back.
He didn't attack, he just asked.
Oh, yes, yes. Pat, that's just the way it's gonna be.
Pat, that I don't care about the more or less fortune in society, Pat?
I'm not gonna get into it, I just made a suggestion, thank you.
I understand.
Um, the golf fees that were rejected, um, seeing that they didn't have enough information to give you guys a grasp on what was happening, that's why you didn't vote on it. I found it very strange that Mr. Di Piero voted yes, and if you, and one other person voted yes, and then the three voted no. I find that hilarious, since Mr. Di Piero, who has always been behind the golf, not increasing their fees and everything, so to me, this was just a little push-off to keep it off the agenda for a while. Now to me, you wanted so much information on the golf course, I was gonna bring up the water department again. I have a letter here, to Ann Grassi, actually, when, once again, we were running on principles and what we were gonna do for people, and one of the things you ran on, John and Ann, was that the, uh, keeping track of the water usage and what have you. And back in 2007, I see you were advised of such things by Jasmine's secretary, but I don't see anybody doing anything about it now, and we had to take seven hundred thousand or seven hundred and fifty thousand from the water department surplus to put back into the water department, okay? So something's really wrong there, and nobody's doing any kind of investigation.
Um, can you give her a few more seconds? I, I wanna set the record straight, 'cause I think it's important, Pat. And, and, and John Sisera had nothing to do with that. There was no money ever used from the water department, you keep mixing up the water department and sewer department.
You, you used the water department surplus.
No, 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 no.
To make, yes you did, listen to Jasmine, oh my god.
Oh, yeah, we used it for water, but we didn't use it...
I said that, that's exactly what I said, you used the water department surplus to put back into the water department. Now what I'm saying to you is, why hasn't anybody gotten up from this DAS and gone over to the water department and find out what the heck's going on over there? That we're not meeting? They're self-sufficient, they're supposed to be meeting revenues versus everything else. Why aren't they? This has been a problem for years, the thirty-eight percent that we were increased, that's why it was increased. Check into it, please. Um, John, you did bring that up, and I had a question regarding that, yeah, I had made that comment.
Well, I was gonna answer you, wait till you're done.
No, no, this was the thing about the solar panels and the, um...
Oh, recreation, yeah.
Recreation, I was gonna bring that up.
Well, I, I didn't know it was private lease, so...
Well, I didn't know that either, but then, again, the school isn't ours either, but just for the heck of it. Um, Jamie, you have said that the town is built out, that's why you were so focused on building up, when we had that package open on two ninety-two.
No, I wasn't focused on building up, I was focused on, but go ahead, I'll let you finish.
Okay. You were focused on that building going up, promoting it, because we're built out.
Right.
Okay, now, how does being built out...
Has nothing to do with built out.
With the group homes, you know, how does that...
That has nothing to, that had nothing to do with being built out, that, that piece of property was deemed for need of rehabilitation, that's, that's basically what it was, it was dilapidated piece of property.
Oh, no, I know what that is.
That's what that was.
Yes.
But in order for the developer, he wanted to come in, in order for him to make a profit, he needed to build up a certain amount, height-wise.
I understood all of that.
And basically what I said to him was, basically, you know, it's gonna be a tough sell, but this, this is the height that I think that the plan of the board would go with three stories over a garage, instead it was six stories over a garage, and, five stories over a garage, and I knew that wouldn't be possible, that's really what that was.
But you're not answering the question, is how does that relate to, I'm asking you about group homes.
Well, group homes are gonna have to...
When you were saying at that time that we're built out...
If we do group homes, I'm sure they gotta go through planning and zoning, and, you know, if they're built a certain way, then they're gonna have to follow the land use laws of, of the town to put them into a house.
These are largely through acquisitions of, of resident, existing residential properties that would be converted, uh, for use for the developmentally disabled.
Thank you. You're not building, you're just renovating existing houses that are out there selling or whatever.
Well, that's, I mean, that's presumably how, uh, you know, interested groups would, would go about accomplishing that objective in, in a town like Parsipony.
Okay, um, the medical benefits, um, we saved, you know, is against a wellness benefit, and if you do carry it again this year, I'll still be against it. Um, however, I would wish that you no longer had town employees doing that time, doing it during work hours as you have.
Well, Pat, I'm gonna continue with...
As you have.
I'm gonna continue it that way.
Well, you're taking, you are taking services away from the taxpayers who are paying their salaries.
I disagree with you.
Jamie, you haven't agreed with anybody, you have said anything, anything...
I'll disagree with you, that's all, Pat, that's my opinion.
Right, and would you please listen to other people's opinions?
I don't know, so go ahead.
And try to make them seem a little bit more sincere than yours. Um, right, I just, I, I just can't go on, there's just... Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I am really disappointed in the way people come up here and make suggestions, and you just, no, 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 no. I'll let you know, I'll let you know, I'll let you know. One other thing, please tell me if on December sixteenth, or whenever the next meeting is...
Fifteenth.
Thirteenth.
Oh, thirteenth, I'm sorry, I was thinking about something else.
You're gonna be here?
I jumped ahead of you. One thing we have in common, we're both lefties.
Is that gonna be the night that the Cat, Town Council discusses the turf field project?
No.
'Cause you had said you were gonna discuss it in December.
No, December fifteenth, at the Board of Ed.
Now you're going to the Board of Ed?
Well, that's, that's where the discussion is, is gonna take place, that's what I said.
Okay.
That was at the Town Council meeting.
Okay, December fifteenth, School Board. Okay.
Okay.
I'll listen to you.
December fifteenth.
No, I'm listening to you now.
Oh, okay.
You said you wanted to say something else.
In response to your, the mayor's wellness, uh, the Wellness Coach, and you're saying on Town Time, you gotta remember now, these, these employers are more productive now, they're healthier, they've, and, and you heard with, um, the, uh, the presentation tonight, the fact of the matter is, it's, it's reducing our costs, I think the perfect example is, and then we can use, and I'll read some of the examples, this is gonna be for another presentation, but... Huh? What do you wanna go?
Jamie, I'm not agreeing with you that it helps you with your cost.
Well, you know what?
What I'm agreeing, and what I'm saying is that it costs the town taxpayers money.
It does cost the taxpayers money, also saves taxpayers dollars as well, so that's what it did. So, Pat, you know, we could, we could sit here and argue about it, we'll be doing a presentation in January on Wellness Coach.
Okay.
And you could, you don't have to agree with it, I mean, that's fine, but I'm answering you honestly, and I don't know if you, you seem to like that.
No, no.
I'm answering you very honestly.
And I'm not answering you honestly.
Even though we disagree, we agree on one thing, like I said before, we're both lefties. Other than that, you know, we don't have to always agree, we can agree to disagree.
Mm-hmm.
But when I see a savings, when I see, um, last year's saving, um, increase, decrease this year, we only have a six percent or six-point-seven percent increase, and I have a presentation today for Wellness Coach, is what it did, it works. And I'm not going to, um, dismantle something that's working for the township right now when it saves tax dollars.
Okay, I'm not saying, okay, if you want it, fine, I'm just saying, don't do it during working hours, let them do it on their own time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll sign in, uh, in a second, Mr. President. Roy Massmer, Ten Drumland Drive. Um, Mr. President, I wish tonight, I've said this three years ago, but, I mean, you did do it that night, John Sisera was president, that you had opened it up to the public when the insurance people were here. I went out to go to the bathroom, and they were still out in the hallway, and I said to them, "Where were you three years ago?" Uh, I think things were done right tonight, I'm not gonna get into a plummet conversation with you with your first statement that you said tonight, why you went with the Morris County JIF three years ago. It's good to see you, John, by the way. Um, and I did miss Mr. Dorsey tonight, you could pass that on to him when you see him. Uh, so that's all I wanted to say, but I did wanna say one thing, though, about the insurance, we do start over again. Because we go into a new plan, for three years, the clock starts running again, for, uh, you know, if we do have good claim losses. Uh, next thing, we got a bad street over there, Mr. Mayor, Coca-Cola's moved out too. I mean, and they moved to Bergen County. I don't know if they got money from, uh, Chris Christie, but, uh, our money, actually, but, uh, you know, it is a, it is a horrible situation, uh, not just the economics, but like, they're not moving to Pennsylvania or Connecticut, like I said last week, they're moving back in our own state somewhere, and we're losing out here, we got the best location in the state, I, I don't understand this. Um, the next thing, and, uh, thank you Natalie for bringing it to the people's attention today, Pat DeFalco and I had a little bit of a falling out for a couple of years, 'cause he misunderstood me when I stood up here one night. It was actually to protect Pat DeFalco, because at that time, and I can't even remember all the situations, but we had the stealing at the Pal, we had the stealing at the Animal Control, not the current people now, we had the stealing in the police department, the court guy stole money, and I said, "How about our controls up at the golf course?" And then I find out, we just had ten thousand dollars stolen. I mean, why we're sitting with that type of cash, uh, I, I know the police come here every time and they escort the money to the, I, I, I think Pat's gotta be, he's retiring in thirty days, so there's not much you can do to him, but, or, less than that, but, uh, can't have that happen, that's, that's unconscionable. Um, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to point out to you, and I don't think any mayors have done this, and I'm not trying to be Mr. Teacher up here, but, uh, I've read this through several times, this municipal charter, your responsibility, one of your responsibilities under our mayor council, report annually to the council and to the public on the state of the municipality, and then there's a paragraph here.
I did it the first year.
You did? Where'd you do it?
I read it at this meeting, and then I had a town hall meeting on March twenty-third of last year.
Oh, you did? Oh, I apologize, okay, I didn't, hm, I didn't, you did it here?
Yeah, I did it, I read to the council, I gave them a state of town, I told them what the budget, what the increase would be.
Oh, is that what you called, oh, okay.
And then on March twenty-third, I did another one.
Okay, you know what I'd do? You don't have to put in Oprah Requesting to me, but I'll make a copy, well, you have it in your office, it's a little bit more detailed than that.
Right.
Uh, what your future's gonna be and everything else. Uh, the last thing, I thought tonight, I misunderstood something from last week, and I know it was a late night, it's not really that late, um, Anita Baldwin's House, I thought that was coming up tonight. Buying that with open space money?
That's, um, an ordinance that's on for second reading.
It's on for second reading. Oh, next week? Oh, oh, okay, but I thought it was tonight that, okay. I know Dan Cacis wants to get home, so I won't, uh...
Anyone else wish to speak? I see no one come forward, I close the public portion.
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting at the closed session.
Second.
Mr. President, would you like me to read it?
Please, read the resolution.
Resolution, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, PL nineteen-seventy-five, Chapter two thirty-one, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the Township Council has the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the Township Council wishes to discuss matters under attorney-client privilege, and whereas minutes will be kept, and once the matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public now, therefore be resolved by Township Council, Township Parsipony, Troy Hills, that the public be excluded from this meeting.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sisera, second by Mr. Ferrera. Roll call, please.
Mr. Carify.
Yes.
Mr. Sisera.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrera.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Di Piero.
Yes.
If I don't see anyone, we come back, have a good night.
You're gonna be in your office, Jamie?
Yes.
No, much, no, that's...